Good evening and welcome to the Wilmer City Council meeting for Monday, November 1st, 2010. Roll call.
Mayor Heitke.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Amon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dockin.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Thank you, Kevin. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the citizens who are here in the council chambers tonight. The agenda does not show any public hearings tonight, so we'll just go right through the agenda item by item. The first one is for the council members, and I'm asking if they have any additions or deletions to the agenda. I'd like to point out to the council that under number 14, we will have some additional discussion with Kevin Halliday about Quick Funds Incorporated. And under number 15, there'll be a little bit expanded discussion about the Board of Canvas when a council member sits in with the county board members, and Kevin will also explain that. Under miscellaneous, there is a request from the Charter Commission, which I'll detail for you. We have a letter from their chairperson requesting some coordination with the city council and the Charter Commission. And then I just want to comment on the holidays parade, which is coming up later in November. Do council members have anything else? If not, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded by the council members for the consent agenda. Tonight, that includes the minutes from the last city council meeting on October 18th, the Utilities Commission minutes of October 25th, the Rice Hospital Board minutes of both October 13th and October 28th, the Planning Commission minutes of October 27th, the Wilmer Design Center for October 13th, and the Zoning Appeals Board minutes of October 25th. Do council members have anything that they want to discuss in the consent agenda? Councilmember Amon.
Mr. Mayor, on the Rice Hospital Board Director's minutes on the bottom of the page.
Steve, on which one?
October 13th, 2010. It would be the -- there's two of them there. Medical staff report, Dr. Weisler.
Okay.
M.D. On the bottom, it's good to see positive things happen at our hospital, but--
Just a second, Steve, before you go into it. Are there other things that council members want to pull under the consent agenda? All right. With the exception of the hospital board minutes of October 13th, those in favor of approving the rest of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. Now, councilmember Amon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I was just noticing on the bottom of the page, your notification from the American College of Surgeons Commission on Cancer that Rice did receive a three-year commendation, accreditation award. I think sometimes we're not -- we read through these minutes, and we read the ordinary, but this one's kind of unusual and stuck out. And I just think that however it was attained, it was just very good, positive news that we do have a great cancer treatment facility at our own hospital, our community hospital. I just want to make note of that. And I don't know who's responsible, but congratulations to whoever was. I think it's great.
All right. Perhaps later in the meeting, I'll ask our CEO from Rice to comment on that. With that comment, Steve, do you want to make a--
I would file a minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded to approve the minutes of the Rice Hospital Board meeting on October 13th. Any other comments? Those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. That motion carries. Now, we are down to the Wilmer City Council Open Forum, number seven. Kevin, do we have anybody who signed up?
Yes, sir.
Who?
I'm not sure.
They just indicated someone did.
All right.
Mr. Dan Grothaus.
Who?
Mr. Dan Grothaus.
All right. At this time, Dan Grothaus, Grootus, would you please come up? Our procedure, Dan, is first welcome to the council meeting, and then would you introduce yourself and your address for the public record, and then you can state what's on your mind.
I'm Dan Grothaus. I farm west of Wilmer. My address is Pennock.
Okay.
And the city has taken land from us twice now by eminent domain.
Okay.
And I hear I got some maps I'd like to pass out, if it's okay. Explain more of the details.
Why don't you give them to our city clerk, and he'll pass them down the row here. He'll keep one for himself. We have to share.
I hear I got an extra one.
Oh, here's the next one here. Oh, we got another extra one.
Multiplying now all of a sudden.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, the yellow shaded and the blue shaded was land that we previously we owned. And the yellow is what was left from after the city took eminent domain. So they took the blue shaded. And my first problem is, is I don't think we got a legal access to the land that's on the north there. And then see what happened was they put it up for bids, public bids, sealed bids. And you know, sealed bids, I mean, $1 can take it, but I happened to fill out the form wrong, so I never got a bid on it. So I own the -- we own the two yellow parts. And my biggest concern is we don't really have a legal access to that one, I mean, a legal easement to that one piece. And I mean, I was wondering, why can't they put them in open bids? Why do they put them sealed bids? And why can't we have first right of refusal since we got invested interest in the other two pieces?
That's a fair question. Would either our city administrator or city attorney wish to comment on that? Or Kevin, our city clerk?
How about the city clerk?
All right. Kevin, would you--
The reason I say that, Mr. Mayor, is Kevin's been involved with all of the acquisitions of the properties.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a quicker pointing of this to help you is, in the expanded area of the airport, the curved road is, in the future, a straight road is existing today, 116. That is, if the airport runway would ever expand. Bidding of all ag land has been going on since I got here in 1986 with sealed bids. They're four-year leases. They are done that way for people that put in alfalfa and oats the first year and get three more years out of their alfalfa crop. And of course, if you were rotating beans and corn, four years is fine also. That is our standard procedure. This year, as Mr. Grothaus indicated, he did bid on a parcel of land that was, I believe, 3A, and he bid on 2A, so he had no legal bid to it whatsoever. And once we do the bids, we pretty much would award it to the highest bidder that came in. Addressing his first right of refusal, that was not in the parcel purchased maybe in 2003. I'm not sure when. The airport opened in 2005, so probably in 2003 it was purchased, using eminent domain as he stated. And the price arrived and purchased, and first right of refusal endlessly was not part of that land exchange.
All right. Do you understand what he just--
Yeah, I understand it. And I even had our lawyer put that in there, but he took it out. I mean, eminent domain, you don't have a choice. I mean, I understand that. That's the way it is, but when it happens, it happens. And you don't have a choice. And we're in procedures right now for more land, and you don't have a choice of this stuff. I mean, what do you do?
Well, I'm sure there's an appeal process if you utilize--
Yeah, we've already gone through that. But they take it, and it's -- if they don't want to take that stuff out, you really don't. I mean, I mean, we had our lawyer put that in there, but it was taken out.
Taken out by the city?
Yeah.
Is that the standard procedure, Kevin, or can you respond to that?
Purchasing land is no standard procedure. There's a variety of things, and some may be in there and some not, but I don't believe there was any in the airport purchases of first right of refusal.
No, there isn't. Legally, they don't have to give us. I mean, basically, what it comes down to, they only do what's legal. And legally, legally, they could give it to us, but there's nothing in the law states that they have to do something like that.
So you're objecting to what the city did when they purchased the land?
Yeah. But I mean, I'm just saying is that we got an vested interest in those other pieces, and it's just like, why can't we just -- and I mean, why can't you just be nice and give us first right refusal? I mean, legally, I've checked it all out. Legally, they don't have to do anything like that. And there's one piece, I don't think we got -- see, see, what was supposed to happen is that proposed roads are supposed to be go through there? Then we would have a easement, a legal easement, and now we don't have that because that road is never was built.
So the legal easement you're talking about is the yellow--
Yeah.
--that's at the top of the page?
Yeah.
And that curved road, Kevin or Mick, is that curved road ever going to be put in, or what's the status of that?
That was just the FAA regulations. I believe expanding it from 5,200 feet to 5,500 feet, where Bruce can jump in and give the footage, that may never happen, and this may go on in a bidding process in perpetuity.
And if--
And then it may happen 10 years from now.
Excuse me. If it doesn't happen, what about his, Mr. Grothaus's statement about having access to that field?
Well, I believe that was either taken care of properly in the document or taking the road continually north, the one that exists. His property would have but that easement anyway, so he can get access right there.
There's no approach.
Well, that's a different story, maybe than easements. Doctors can drive in anywhere, but county controls a number of approaches anywhere along that line.
Basically, my proposal is, is they've already had rental bids there. I'm wondering if we could cancel the rental bid and give me my easement across there, and then I'd rent it back to the -- rent it from the city, I should say. That's my proposal.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my recommendation is that approximately two weeks from now, the planner, airport manager, will be bringing about eight, if not nine, leases to the finance committee for discussion. It could be dealt with there.
All right. So in two weeks?
Approximately. We would let Mr. Grothaus know, though, when those leases come. All leases come to the finance committee.
Okay. So that would be a time to discuss this further.
My recommendation.
Yeah, I guess fair enough.
If you're notified by City Hall, you'll be able to attend that meeting?
I will attend it if I am notified, and I know the time and the date.
All right. We'll see that you're notified.
All right.
Kevin and Mick, you'll take care of that?
Certainly, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You bet. Kevin, is there anybody else on that?
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
You might have noticed Mike Schramm and Bill Fenske are here from Rice Hospital. And the reason they stopped by tonight is they were thinking maybe there might be some questions with regard to the hospital board minutes of October 28th, where they acted on some financing issues related to the Rice Care Center.
Okay. All right. Why don't we proceed in this manner? That was a very brief agenda for that meeting. Mike, can you just explain what happened and what your strategy is here? And then council members, if you have questions, please raise those after his comments.
Sure. Yeah, I'll just make a couple of quick comments. Our board met, we had a special board meeting on October 28th for our Rice Care Center project. And just to take a quick step back, we've been working on planning for this project and actually doing a lot of work leading up to a recommendation that our board approved here a while back on the direction we plan to go with facility enhancements for Rice Care Center. We had planned to actually bring bids to the board on the October 13th date, and we had some issues. We actually had rejected -- our bids came in higher than we would have wanted, and we've actually rejected a couple of different trade groups and have worked through -- we've been working through a variety of issues, but we scheduled the meeting, a special meeting on October 28th, and presented an overall budget to our board based on some things we've been working on, as well as reported on the fact that we would be rejecting two of the trade groups, mechanical and electrical. But we presented the remainder of the bids for approval by the board, which the board then subsequently did approve. So that was the only purpose for that special meeting. We had our construction management firm, J.E. Dunn, and our architect, Hoary Elving, there also to answer questions, and just presented the overall budget, went through all the work groups or trade groups, if you will, for the project, and laid out the overall cost, and then made a recommendation to the board, which then they approved with the project. Back to just briefly, too, with the project and what we're doing. Our board, a while back, as you may recall, had approved a four-year plan for both new construction as well as renovation at Rice Care Center. And we laid that out in four different phases. What we presented to the board with a total construction cost of $2,971,941 is phases one and two of the four-phase project that will happen over a four-year period of time. We have been able to work with the state, and we got the state to agree to allow us to combine the bidding and the work for phases one and two together. And what that will include on the front end is the all the new construction, the construction of a new 23-bed charred state unit, which will be an addition onto the existing facility. Phases three and four, when we get to them a few years down the road, will be circling back and renovating the existing facility, getting to things like private rooms and a lot of other enhancements with the infrastructure of the facility as well. So that was just a brief summary of what we presented to the board and what the board approved, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any. But we wanted to be here tonight just to make sure that if there were questions from the council, that we could address those here tonight.
Thank you, Mike. Council members, any questions? Councilmember Amon?
Just out of curiosity, what, the original estimate was about 2.8 or 2.6 million?
Yeah. Good question. I will address that. Councilmember Amon. We had, when we discussed with the board, the four-year, four-phased approach, the state actually allows us to construct, or will allow you for capital cost, to construct in a project without state approval, up to $1.4 million per year. It doesn't mean you can't go over and above that. We've worked hard to try to bring the cost back, but 2.8 million for the two phases is what the state will actually allow you to have some of those costs be allocatable back through your rates. So they'll come back to us some of those costs in our Medicaid rates over time. So it's more of a state formula than something we're actually held to.
Thank you.
Mike, were you surprised that the, what you had estimated and what came in as bids was higher than what you estimated?
We were trying to be as efficient as we could and fairly tight with the budget. Our construction management firm, as we talked to them, knew the budget was fairly tight. We're trying to do a lot of different things with that. So I guess yes and no. Certainly, we don't like to see them come in with where they came in at, but you obviously can't control the marketplace either. And we did have a fair amount of interest in all the different trade groups as well.
I'm sure.
We do plan to rebid the mechanical, electrical trade groups. We rejected those bids, and those were two areas where we believe we could do some work with looking at what scope is and re-putting together documents and sending them out for bids, which we plan to do here in the near future, so we can get going with the project and yet rebid those two trade groups, and hopefully, things will work fine there in those two areas.
Before the end of the year, probably?
Yes. Yep. We plan to get, submit those documents here very soon.
All right. Anybody else from the council? Thank you, Mike. Bill, thanks for coming in with your time, and we appreciate that. Mick, anything else on this issue?
Unless he wants to comment on Mr. Amon's cancer.
I will.
I would love to hear it.
I will. Actually, I will, I want to make a couple of comments. One is, I'll get to the cancer center. As was reported in the minutes, you'll see, too, that our August numbers, financially, we had a very good August, actually the best month we've had this year. And we've been doing a lot of work to improve operationally and how we're doing from a financial standpoint. So we were very pleased with those numbers. Our inpatient volume for the year has continued to be running behind budget where we were -- behind where we were last year, too, which is predominantly a big part of what our challenge has been. So we've been doing a lot of work, but we were pleased to see numbers in August looking quite strong. So I just wanted to comment on that briefly. And then, secondly, onto the cancer center. I will say, first of all, that the success and the progress with our recent survey for the cancer center, I can't take credit for that, but from an organizational standpoint, I have to give credit where credit is due. And we've got a great staff that worked very hard and has done a tremendous amount of work in preparation for that, and our manager of our cancer center, Barb Heft, as well as our oncologist. Everybody's played a role in that, and we're very proud of our cancer center, which is a joint venture through Wilmer Medical Services with ECMC. Now that we've been into that space, it's been very well received by patients, families, and the public, anybody who has to be able to access that type of service. But we're very proud of that, and we're very proud of the recent survey results. And that's one service amongst many that is a real regional service that we provide on our campus at Rice, and that's certainly something that patients and families in the whole region can benefit from, not only now, but into the future. So we're pleased with that. We're also working very hard on the recruitment front for medical as well as radiation oncology to make sure that we've got manpower in the future to make sure we can continue to operate a top-notch cancer center.
Good. Thanks, Mike.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay. We'll go back to the agenda, then. We had Mr. Grothaus here for the open forum. Was there anybody else who wanted to address the council tonight? All right. Then we will move on to the Finance Committee report for October 25th. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda was a public comment period on the 2011 budget. Mr. John Sullivan talked to the committee. His original discussion centered on, he wanted a clarification of some money budgeted for Capital Outlay. That question was withdrawn at the close of the meeting, so that was resolved. But I would like the minutes to reflect the fact that he also, he started out his comments with a concern that he felt that the budget did not provide enough detail for the public to really be able to ask good, solid questions. So that was for information only, and I would like the minutes to reflect that, please, that that question was asked. The second item was Westside Liquor Compliance violation. Pursuant to an October 10, 2010 liquor compliance check that was conducted by our police department, staff reported to us that one retail liquor establishment violated Municipal Code Section 3-2, selling or giving intoxicating liquor to persons to whom sale is prohibited. They incurred their first violation since 2005, and the Westside manager, Steve Wright, was there to explain measures being taken to eliminate further violations. He stated that all of his employees receive ongoing extensive training in compliance responsibility, and that the store's policy currently states immediate termination if a violation occurs. This was for information only. The third item on our agenda was an ongoing discussion of the 2011 budget. Administrator Schmidt reviewed the general government portion of the mayor's proposed 2011 budget detailing the various city departments at Capital Outlay Program. It was pointed out that the mayor, city council, city administrator, city clerk, treasurer, finance, and legal departments have all held the line on spending. Over the last two to three years, general government has seen a reduction of eight paid on-call firefighters and one maintenance worker, and the duties of the airport manager have been shifted to the city planner's position. There's currently one position open within the engineering and the police departments, and the clerical position at the fire department has been reduced to an eight tenths of a full-time person. There is a possibility of some additional saving in savings in the clerks' department with the planned retirement of the city assessors, appraisers. That situation is in the process of being further evaluated. Finance Director Okins presented a detail of the designated fund balances in the general fund as of December 31, 2009, and provided a brief explanation of each designation. That was for information. Also for information were some reports. We looked at the September Rice Trust, the third quarter Rice Trust, third quarter interest, the third quarter quarterly investment activity on the September cash investment reports. We did have one item that came up that required some action. Administrator Schmidt informed the committee that a donation in the amount of $285 has been received from the DISC Golf Club, and that's to be used to assist with renovations of the DISC golf course at Robins Island. Following discussion, there was a motion made seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution accepting the donation of $285 from the DISC Golf Club and send a letter of appreciation.
Second. We have a motion, and it's been seconded to accept a donation of $285 from the DISC Golf Club and then send them a letter of appreciation. Further comment? Kevin, that's a roll call, right? Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
That concluded our business, unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. We have a motion, and it's been seconded to file the minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Next are the minutes of the Public Work Safety Committee report for October 27th. Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item was a donation and a request to accept it of an inflatable bouncy house from the Wilmer Firefighters Association, and this bouncy house is used during fire prevention week activities or any other time of fire prevention activities. And the acceptance of the donation allows the coverage through the League of Minnesota Cities for the city to cover this bouncy house, and the value is about $1,800. I would introduce a resolution to accept the donation of the bouncy house on behalf of the city of Wilmer and acknowledge its receipt by letter.
Second. We have a motion, and it's been seconded, for a resolution to accept a bouncy house from the Wilmer Fire Department. No, I'm sorry. A donation by the city allows insurance coverage through the League of Minnesota Cities. The value of the bouncy house is $1,800. Further comment? I have to ask the chief, Kelvin. This isn't your bouncy house for your grandkids or something, is it? That you're donating? Where did this come from? Where are we getting this?
Mr. Mayor, we purchased it from a local vendor here in town, and so it was bought, purchased locally, and was something that that individual no longer needed for his business, so he allowed us to purchase it. And we do have it for use for fire prevention activities or activities as deemed appropriate for the city.
Great.
And it is not for my grandkids, although they love it.
I mean, I thought it was your grandkids, and you are now donating it, then. All right. Well, that's good. You use it for various public safety demonstrations around the community.
Correct.
Super. Any other comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
as constructed by Dunick Incorporated and issue final payment in the amount of $124,347.12. Further comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The next item was a final payment on one of our projects, and our acting Public Works Director, Holly Wilson, presented the final pay request for Project 0903. And this was underground utilities and street improvements on Wilmer Avenue Southwest from 18th Street Southwest to the industrial boulevard. The paperwork's been received, the final quantities have been agreed upon, and the final payment consists of the final quantities as constructed and the 5% retainage. And our staff is recommending acceptance of the project and issuing the final payment. So I would introduce a resolution to accept Project 0903 as constructed by Dunick Inc. and issue final payment in the amount of $124,347.12.
Second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded for a resolution to accept Project 0903 as constructed by Dunick Incorporated and issue final payment in the amount of $124,347.12. Further comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Next item was a request brought to the committee from John Bryant of Donahue and Associates to consider the approval of substantial completion for the last two systems under Project 812-C. The two systems are numbers six and seven, the solids handling and solids storage systems. And both systems have completed their seven-day run successfully on October 22nd. And all the systems for 812-C have now been successfully demonstrated. So I would introduce a resolution to approve the substantial completion for Systems Six and Seven for Project 812-C and authorize the city administrator to execute it on behalf of the City of Wilmer.
Second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded for a resolution to approve the substantial completion of Systems Six and Seven for Project 0812-C. Comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Amon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The next item was a request to the committee to consider reducing the retainage on Project Rhonda Ray from Donahue and Associates was at the meeting, and they're looking at a reduction from 5% to 2.5%. The project is the construction of the two pump stations, one at Benson Avenue and one at Wilmer Avenue, Jenny O'Turkey Store plants. And substantial completion has been achieved and a few items remain on the punch list, of which 2.5% retained would more than cover the expenses to complete the work. So I would introduce a resolution to approve the reduction in the retainage from the 5% to the 2.5% for payment on contract amount for Project 816-D6.
Second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded for a resolution to approve the reduction in the retainage from the 5% to the 2.5% for payment on contract amount for Project 816-D6.
Second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded for a resolution to approve the reduction in retainage fee from 5% to 2.5% for payment on Project Number 0816-D6. Mick, is this something that happens once in a while? Do we get these requests to reduce retainage fee? Because usually we hold it until the whole project is completed.
It depends on the size of the project, Mr. Mayor. We have done this actually on this project previously on a different phase. Once we make the determination that there are sufficient funds left in the retainage amount to cover the work that's needed to complete the project, then we oftentimes would reduce the retainage.
Okay. Our city attorney, do you have any concerns about this at all? Okay. Any other comments from councilmembers? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The Public Works, Public Safety Committee met last Tuesday as the minutes reflect. And that Thursday, John Bryant, who is employed by Donahue and Associates, who's worked with our wastewater treatment facility project and has been very dedicated, very informative, very gave us a lot of information, and has done a great job. And we just, we recognized John at that meeting because he was leaving on that Thursday. So John is long gone now, back to Missouri, but we really appreciated his work and his thorough work that he did. The last item was brought in by our community ed and rec director, Mr. Brizendine, and it's a request to reappropriate $20,000 from the 2008 capital funds park improvement budget, which had been designated for rehabilitation and replacement of a shelter at the Garfield School Site. The first, well, I guess there was two of them, I'm sorry, but there was two projects. One of them was the Garfield School Site, the first being the installation of an irrigation system. Oh, this is the request, I'm sorry. The first was being the installation of an irrigation system on the yellow softball field at Swanson. And the contractor that did the work on, was that the green one?
Correct.
On the green one, agreed to perform the work for the same cost. And the second project is the construction of a berm along the first base side. There's already a berm along the third base side, but this would be on the first base side, a Baker Field with block and concrete and dirt. And staff is currently discussing this improvement with the Stingers Baseball Organization, hoping to combine resources and complete the project in as a joint effort. We have, today I received an email, and I can let Steve talk about it, but we did get a letter from the Stingers, also some agreements on some of the block. And maybe, Steve, you want to just give us a little further information on it before I introduce the resolution?
Certainly. Mayor Heitke, Councilmember Reese, as stated last week at the Public Works meeting, we had discussions going on with the Stinger Baseball Club on the project at the stadium. And the final determination is the work that will be done is a continued berm along the first base side, almost mirroring the berm that is on the third base side. So it'll be consisting of dirtwork, laying block, fencing the backside for security reasons, and also the front side for that matter, and then putting a concrete plaza on top of that facility as well. The project partnership involves work with the Stingers, who is indeed working with JME Companies out of Newland and Spicer area. And what that amounts to is the Stingers will take care of the block work. From a financial perspective, Public Works staff will do the labor, and city budgets will handle the fencing and concrete work to complete the project. Estimated prices are about $7,500 for the fencing and concrete, and the Stinger donation of the block is in the neighborhood of $6,000. So about a $13,000, $14,000 project, the city investment would be about $7,500.
Okay. So with that, I would introduce a resolution to reappropriate that $20,000 from the 2008 capital funds that was designated for the warming house at Garfield to the construction of an irrigation system in Yellow Field, and then the berm along the third base side at Baker Field that Steve just described to us.
Second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded for a resolution to reappropriate $20,000 from the 2008 capital funds designated for the warming house at Garfield School to the construction of an irrigation system in Yellow Field and a berm along the third base at Baker Field. Comment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just add for your consideration. I did point out to the committee the other day that one reason this was being requested was our capital reserve policy mandates that funds not used within a three-year period revert back to the city's general fund. And one of the reasons the $20,000 from '08 was targeted is because if it were not used in '10, then it would not be available for capital projects. And we did not believe that there would be improvements to the Garfield Site, whether it be in the traditional basement warming house or a newly constructed facility. Then, of course, the other consideration was that it was possible this work could be done yet this year. I also pointed out to the committee that those capital reserve funds are areas we would identify if and when we're faced with additional cuts because of losses in the local government aid program. And if the funds were expended for this project, of course, they wouldn't be available for that purpose when the time came.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't we have in the 2011 budget money for irrigation? Was that for yellow?
Yeah, that's why I raised my hand.
Mr. Anderson, that is correct. We've got three fields to complete at Swanson Complex. And in identifying the field, we did put yellow in for next year, but there is also the red and blue field. Our game plan is to try to do one every year or every other year, and we do have three fields to complete.
Okay, so that money then would be used on a different field other than what we had in the budget?
That, or it's your option. That'd be something that, you know, could be reduced depending on next year's budget as well.
I understand. Thank you.
Councilmember Reese.
Mr. Mayor, the one thing that I was going to bring up was the '11 budget and how it had been factored in there already. Same thing Dennis had just brought up. But I guess the other things that I was going to mention is, you know, Baker Field with the Stingers and all the action that we had out there this year, it got a lot of use. And there are other teams that use the green and the yellow. And I'm not a ball player, but we, I used to play softball many years ago. But it was commented on at the meeting that it just makes it so much nicer for the ball players. And, you know, with them being moved over to the yellow and the green and maybe not being able to use Baker Field all the time, it just makes that field so much nicer. The other thing that I would comment on is that I've gone to Stingers games, and my wife and I have sat on the grass over on the third base side. And we've also gone over and just for a while stood on the third base side. And there's just a world of difference between the third base side and the first base side. It just makes it so much nicer when you've got that berm and you've got that nice landscape, nice concrete area to be watching the game. It's just very, very nice and very professional.
Anyone else? Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering, this is a good decision at this time, I brought it up at the meeting, that we spend this money out of capital reserve, or capital funds, at this time, not knowing what our budget may be cut from LGA. We don't know yet, and I suspect we won't know till next year. I just don't know if it's a prudent decision at this time to take that $20,000. And, you know, it's great, I'm all for the berm over there on the third base side and sprinkling the field for softball, but our softball numbers are down considerably from five, 10 years ago. And what would the general public think about us? It's kind of a perk doing these two items. I'm sure I'd like to have them done, but, you know, doggone it, we've got potholes to fix, and we're falling behind in that year after year after year. We're told that there's the likelihood of an ashbore beetle coming to town. There's other places this money probably could go in a more sensical manner, other than these perks presently. Maybe we should hold off till next year and see what our cuts are. I mean, I don't feel right supporting this with the economy being the way it is and not knowing what our funding level will be next year with LG. I just, I just don't feel comfortable.
Any other comments? Councilmember Amon.
Someone on, I wasn't at the meeting, but I was just looking at this too, looking at, it's a luxury to have a field. I don't know how many years. Rick, you've played softball for many years around the nation. I don't know how many of them were watered, but I can't support putting a sprinkler system down. I'd rather see the money go into the community investment fund and help support repairing the streets that are in dire repair of need around the community. And it isn't that I don't support it, I just don't, I think it's a luxury. And it's a nice luxury to have. And I do have to admit, as far as your comment on the softball fields, the attendance of the public out there is down dramatically, and I'm not sure why. But I can't support the idea of irrigation system. Not only the irrigation, but you also have to maintain it every year. And although it's a small amount of money, when you look at the overall budget, it's principal right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a great idea because it's cost sharing, and that's been our plan for the last few years, cost share with other entities. As for the sprinkler system, we're getting it installed for the price from last year. If you wait next year, the costs probably will go up. And we do have it in the budget for 2011 for a system. And if we get crunched, we won't be doing one next year. And by having a sprinkler system on a field, it's easier to maintain, so it's less cost for the maintenance people. So I think it, I mean, we just spent how much money to bring a new road in and a parking lot over in the softball complex. So now we're going to have a terrible field for them to play on? That doesn't make sense. And if you improve it, teams will come and you can have more tournaments on the weekends, so. And all the good complexes that I played on across the nation, they were all sprinkler. So it's important.
Value your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, statistically, the usage of our fields is way up over what it was a few years ago. Statistically, the numbers are there, and I just mentioned that as a point of clarification.
We have a motion on the table and it's been seconded. Are you ready to vote?
Question, Mr. Mayor. So if local government aid is going to be hit dramatically, we would be dealing with that in the 2011 budget if we need to revise this? Are you still with approving this, or your plans are still to go ahead this year with it? If possible.
Mr. Mayor, when Steve brought this to me, I, if I did not think we could cover the cost of this project with the loss of local government aid through other resources, I wouldn't have let it got this far.
All right. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Councilmember Johnson?
For clarification, this is on the first base side, I believe, not the third base side?
This is on the first base side.
Yeah, well, I mean, the resolution has written in the paperwork says third, and I believe Councilman Reese read it as third base. So I guess maybe we ought to amend that to first. So no point, but...
You're right.
All right.
I was thinking first, reading third.
Roll call, Kev?
Councilmember DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
No.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
And Fagerly.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays.
The resolution passes.
That was all the business that came before the Public Works Public Safety. I'll move and file the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded, to file these minutes. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just since we're on Public Works, recently I received quite a bit of information from an individual having to do with porous asphalt and using it for stormwater control. And I'd like to pass this along to Mr. Reese and have it put on the agenda for Public Works Public Safety next week, I believe. Next week? That was it.
All right. Anything else? Those in favor of filing the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, the Labor Relations Committee report for October 27th. Councilmember Amon.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we met October 27th, Conference Room One. Number one on the agenda is we announced the intent of the committee to close the meeting for discussions of contract negotiations, strategies, and guidelines. The motion was carried, and we reopened the meeting about at 4:45. Item number two on the agenda was the Mr. Schmidt, our city administrator, presented committee findings of a study of the merger, the city and the county merger of the city and the county assessing departments. The study was conducted in conjunction with Mr. Larry Kleindell, the county administrator, including participation from both the city and the county assessing department employees. Mr. Schmidt acknowledged the cooperation of the county officials and thanked all staff persons for their participation in the project. The city and county administrators have determined the consolidation of the assessing departments is feasible, and the formation provided includes the general terms and conditions for a seven-year buyout formula and the manner in which employee transfers would take place. Although determined to be feasible, several concerns from the city's perspective were discussed in detail, including labor relations implications, the impacts to city employees, of the four current employees in the assessing department. One has announced plans to retire at the end of the year in 2010 or shortly thereafter. Another has indicated a preference to stay with the city, thereby resulting in a bump or move another employee off their job, another city employee's job. The scenario presents a potential situation of only two employees transferring to the county and a third employee losing his or her job. Significant differences in salaries and pay scales between the city and the county employees, along with equal significant differences in the cost of health care insurance premiums and coverage provided. Adjusting salaries to fill the void or close the gap are not included in the buyout formula amounts. Number three was what happens if, after the seven-year buyout, the county has contracts of 26 jurisdictions whereby the units of government are charged a fee for each parcel assessed. Any charge from the county for parcels assessed within the city following the seven-year buyout would reduce the projected savings to the city. Both assessing organizations use the computer-aided mass appraisal system. Although the city of Wilmer's is more advanced, concise, precise for evaluation processes, there would be additional cost to merging the systems, including required technological improvements to ensure adequate access to the city assessing records. Number five was aside from the fact that it appears we are simply shifting the tax obligation to the county. The city staff has determined that the loss of the assessing department would be disruptive and distract from our ability to manage and conduct city business while continuing to provide the best possible service to our residents. All supporting documentation was included. Mr. Schmidt ended his presentation with a statement that after careful deliberation, he has come to the conclusion that it is not in the city's best interest to proceed with the consolidation of the city and the county assessing departments. He also noted that the work was being completed on an alternative program whereby one city assessing department would be eliminated and certain administrative responsibilities, i.e. special assessments and clerical, be shifted to other departments. This program could result in immediate savings for the city. Following discussion and a request for additional financial analysis, which was given to us tonight, Mick, if you want to comment on that, it was agreed that the matter would be received for information and referred to the full council for discussion. Mr. Mayor, I think before we move further on this, I would like to see if there is consensus with the council to have Mick and Larry at the county continue in this process, or if there is a feeling one way or another from the individuals, otherwise they're kind of spinning our wheels. And I believe Mick mentioned something about maybe after the retirement, after another year, that it might be a better time to discuss making the change or making the transition. Would you like to comment on that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I was pretty clear about that in my memorandum, and it's included in the packet. Part of my conclusion was that this did not seem to be the right time to do it, that there might be better times and better opportunities in the future. When exactly that would be, I don't know, but I think the key retirements of certain individuals may play a role in determining when that happens. It's just, it's really difficult to say. And I think I would go back and point out as well that both Larry and I agreed that this is, it can be done. I think what we have to do is ask ourselves, what are we really gaining from this? And, you know, if we can answer that question and somehow measure it, then we should move forward. What I'm suggesting is we can't, we can't do that today, or I can't, maybe others can.
Mick, can you elaborate on the fee basis that the county would be charging after that period? Was it $11?
Well, you know, in all fairness to the county, I would acknowledge that in the work Larry and I have done, that was never a factor. I'm simply pointing out that, you know, seven years from now, I'm not going to be here. I don't know if Larry will be here. I don't know how many of us and the county commissioners will be here. But the fact of the matter is, they currently charge the 26 jurisdictions within the county a fee. Larry and I went into this with the idea there would be no fee, but unless that's in writing today and agreed upon by everyone, and whether it means anything seven years from now, I don't know. It's something I'm pointing out. The net effect of that happening is to reduce any savings that the city might realize at the current fee schedule by some 30 percent.
Nick, on the information that we asked you to bring forward, just a, I'm reading it here on the...
It's a very simple analysis whereby I'm using the numbers from the formula buyout, recognizing, as you mentioned in the reading of the minutes, that they don't, they were developed prior to, or in the early stages of our analysis. So we would, we'd have to reduce that savings amount by whatever it would require us to add to the package to make up some of the voids or differences in the compensation programs of the differences between the two organizations. The middle column is the amount using the buyout formula reduced by a predetermined percentage over a period of seven years. That's how much money we would save. We would not budget, those are the amounts we would budget each year, and then the second column shows how much we're actually saving over the seven-year period. It amounts to $550-some thousand. The last column is my reference to the optional plan that I've been working on whereby we know that in the very near future, there could very well be a retirement within the organization. If we don't fill the position and shift some of the responsibilities elsewhere, we would save that amount each year for seven years. Actually, that amount would be higher because you would, you might assume that over seven years, there might be some increases in the package, the compensation. So it's trying to give you an idea what's happening here each year. And then at the end of the seven years, we've saved this much under the buyout or the consolidation program, and this much under Plan B, for lack of a better description. I don't think those numbers are that far apart. Do they justify moving forward with the consolidation based on just the simple savings factor? Well, that's a decision that the council has to make.
And that's exactly why I think we need to reach some type of consensus with the council on the direction, if we want to go that route or not, and...
And I'm perfectly willing, and I think Larry would be too, to keep working on it. And if time at some point in the future allows a more feasible consolidation, then I would support it. What's happening here, too, is that we initially started out using January 1st, 2011, as our target date for implementation. We were reminded by our staff that we weren't thinking very clearly. That's their busiest time of the year, so we moved it back to July 1. With all the employment considerations, the county would want to give employees, and the city would want to give employees proper notice, and in order to do so, we need to do that prior to January 1. That gives us six months. It gives employees with the city an opportunity to plan better for their future. In the event not all employees were to make the move, it gives the county sufficient time to hire the necessary employees to implement the program in July. That's the reason it came to a head when it did.
There's a lot of weighing factors, and this has never been done before, and this, well, you've done it with other departments, the sheriff's department and several others, but this is a little more detailed. I'm concerned about is the computer, who brought this up to committee too, is as far as when the county was going to be bringing up standard or bringing their computer assessing hardware up to the current standard that the city of Wilmer has. Is that a major factor in this with the county or not?
No, I don't think so.
And that could, do you have any idea how long that would take? Is it just a matter of them budgeting for it?
What we know is that the two systems are different. And we recognized early on that there would be a period of time required to bring them together as one. I don't know how long that would take. I would guess probably a couple of years.
As far as training for the employees, would that also be part of the strategy of implementing it? You'd have to...
No, no, I...
It's no problem.
That would be an issue.
Wouldn't be any issue?
No.
Well, we, the committee decided to bring back the council for discussion.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Councilmembers, what are your concerns here? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I always thought we had 9,000 parcels in Wilmer, but in the memo it said 8,000. And the county would charge $10 a parcel?
I always thought we had 9,000 parcels too, until I was told it was closer to 8,000. I don't know what they would charge, Mr. Fagerly. All I'm saying is they currently charge $10, maybe $11 per parcel in the 26 other jurisdictions within the county.
Yeah, the extra dollar would be for commercial property, probably. But that would be $80,000 or $88,000.
Mm-hmm.
What's our budget now in the assessing office?
About $300.
Isn't that a big savings?
$80,000 is a lot of money, yeah.
No. The city pays the county $80,000, and it's costing us $320 now? It's a big savings for the city.
You're talking about at the end of the seven years? That's when it would kick in if it did.
Even in the next year or two?
Well, it wouldn't be in effect in the next year or two.
And the reason being?
The buyout provides funding to the county over a period of seven years.
Okay. So you just can't say we're going to eliminate a department and the county's going to take it over?
Yeah, we could, but I'm not so sure they'd be very excited about it.
But I think the state statute said it's up to the county to do the assessing.
I think if the city pulled the plug on assessing, the county probably would have a responsibility to do it. And I'm guessing they probably wouldn't charge $10 a parcel when it got to that point.
Well, they'd have to charge the same amount as what they're charging the township, so. But I know Montevideo eliminated theirs probably 12, 15 years ago. Reddick Falls eliminated theirs two years ago. Litchfield eliminated theirs last year. So that's the precedent coming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are a couple of things that come to mind for me. One, I think, 2000, making a decision by January of this year so we could do it in July, probably not going to happen. But I do think that we need to continue the discussion. I think there's savings to be had. There were some legitimate concerns and questions brought forth that I think can be resolved, but we just need to have more discussions and continue this dialogue. I think it makes sense for the taxpayers over the long haul. So I, you know, I think we keep meeting, we keep trying to resolve these things. Maybe one of the things we resolve is this, is there going to be a fee or is there not going to be a fee? I mean, I can't imagine that there would be after we've paid them all of this money going forward, but that's one of the things that needs to be resolved. And I think there's other things that need to be resolved. So I'd like to see us keeping, moving forward, and maybe look at something in 2012.
That would definitely be our argument, is that we kind of paid it upfront, so to speak. But when you talk about savings, the point I was making, and in response to Mr. Fagerly, yeah, it is a savings to the city. And one of the first things I acknowledged. In fact, if we just closed the door on the department and the county was required to take it over, the city of Wilmer would save $300,000 a year. My point was simply that as a property taxpayer in Wilmer, if the county picks up the $300,000... My point was simply that as a property taxpayer in Wilmer, if the county picks up the $300,000, I'm still paying my fair share. Where are the savings? In the city budget, yes. To the property taxpayer in Wilmer, no.
Go ahead, Dennis.
You know, I'm not going to speak for the county, but I have faith and confidence that they're going to do the right thing, and they're going to gain efficiencies there over some period of time. So, I still think that we need to move forward and look at this.
Other council members who haven't spoken yet. I'd like to say something, and then I'll come back to you, Steve.
Okay, go ahead.
I know that part of the research that was done here was to talk to other departments within the city about how they coordinate with the assessing department. And I did have a conversation with one of the county commissioners who said that, well, that'll all be taken care of by technology. Well, I don't know what that technology is yet, and I think that's one of the questions that has to be explored, is when our engineering department needs assessing information, or when our planning and development department needs assessing information, where do they get that information? Do they have to run over to another building that's three or four blocks away? Or is it all available in technology? And I don't know what the technology requires, but right now, we have a very close coordination of city departments with the assessing department. It's very convenient for them to interact with each other, and some of the departments, such as building inspectors, they interact several times a week, sometimes several times a day. And we need to be conscious of how this impacts our other city departments if the assessing department is no longer under the function of the city. And those questions haven't been answered yet. I don't know what this advancing technology is that will make this as easy as it is now to step from one doorway into another that's 10 feet apart. So, that's one of my concerns. Councilmember Ahm, do you have another comment?
Well, you touched on some of the same things I was going to bring up. We don't want to just be spinning our wheels here to keep staff and the county communicating. I know you guys get along good already. I think that's been proven. But I'm just wondering if maybe what we shouldn't be doing is, as Mr. Anderson, Dennis mentioned, is that we evaluate this on a six-month basis and move forward in still negotiating with the county to see if there is potential for us to continue to save money for the citizens. You know, it's our obligation to investigate or to reevaluate all of the departments in the city for the best use of tax dollars, and I think they should be commended for all the work you've been in. This is a lot of reading. You've taken all sides, even the labor negotiations, the ASME groups, you consulted with Frank Madden. It shows every detail what we have, and all the obstacles that we have to deal with. But I'm a little concerned about the comments that were by staff, and as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, how it's going to impact the use of the facility being gone, or how it'll impact our staff in using that facility. And I'm not sure if that's available online, or if it's something that's readily available through counties. I'm not sure how it'll work out with the system, because it is very easy for you to walk over into the assessing department and get information. I don't know if that's available to be done online between anybody in city staff or with county, but that's another thing we should consider. We should make it available for, you know, all departments to have easy access. And I don't know if that physical presence in our building is absolutely necessary. That hasn't been proven to me, and it hasn't been explained.
I'm going to call in a minute on Larry Kleindol if he wants to make comments. So, not yet, Larry, but I'll call on you in just a second. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, all of these concerns that were brought up by staff, I think, are legitimate, but they've been brought up in the last couple of weeks. Here again, I don't think we've had adequate time to really think about and look at possible solutions. Certainly, technology, I mean, that's the first thing you think of, but I too, I don't know what that might involve or what it might entail for us in terms of expense or anything else. But I don't think we've had adequate time to, you know, figure out how it's going to work. It's only been a few weeks. So, again, I say, keep moving the process forward.
Councilmember DeBleek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think we, you know, Dennis brings up some good points, and we should keep this moving forward. Technology, there's technology there that I believe that this department can be located But with technology, that comes as a cost too, and I don't know if that has been factored into these numbers as well. It could be very costly to set that technology up to have with this department to get the information that all is wanted. And I think we owe it to our employees to bring this to some kind of resolution or consideration so that they're not keeping their lives on hold while we're talking about the possibility of consolidating these departments.
At this time, I'll call on Larry. And Larry, if you'd like to react to anything that's been said, or if you want to make a statement, go ahead.
I'm taking notes.
Larry is...
Appreciate it.
Let me just, Larry is the county administrator for Candy York County.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to speak. The process has been good, but it has been very detailed. The one thing I wanted just to say is, I don't want you guys to get stuck on the what-ifs. The county's never said after seven years, there's going to be a charge of parcel. The first time it came up was this discussion, was at the committee meeting. We talked about, is it a possibility? You know, what could other future boards do? We don't know what's going to happen. But part of our agreement that we had talked about in October 13th is, my job would be to make sure the current county board and the city council would understand what the package and the plan was. Okay? So, I want to make sure we take that off the board. As far as technology, you know, we use the same system. It's not two different systems. It's the same system. And we use the same computer consultant that works with both systems, that can combine them. That being said, the decision is the city's. This is your program, your employees, and the decision is yours. And I'll support what you guys decide. If you decide that this is a process that you want to enter into, the county's ready, and we're able to do this. We can make it happen. I agree with Councilman DeBleek that I don't believe we should drag this on six more months to discuss it. It's not good for our employees, not good for your employees, it's not good for my employees. I think, you know, people hanging out, wonder what's going to happen with their jobs, it makes it difficult to make planning going ahead. Also, as we go through retirements and stuff, we need to make plans of what we want to do. And it's nice for us to make some decisions. If this is going to happen, we're going to take this route. If it's not going to happen, we can take a different route. But, you know, if there's more numbers, we've got to get together, we can do that. But I don't think we drag it on for a great amount of time, because I think the numbers are, what we've got done is, the numbers aren't going to change a lot in the next few months. I'll take any questions.
Councilmember Anderson, then Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Larry, would it impact you if it didn't happen until July of '12? Would that cause any difficulty for you in terms of staffing or anything like that?
Just because we have some retirements and some decisions to make regarding how we're going to put our department together, because we're kind of waiting to see what happens here. It would have an impact, but I think we could work around it.
And I'm saying that we would give you a decision, but it may not actually happen until '12. So, you'd know where you were, what was going to happen.
Sure. We could make it work. We always make things work.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think we're at any, we can't make that decision tonight to push ahead with this for July of 2011. I don't think we can. This is the second meeting I've been at where this has been discussed. We've had, you know, some numbers thrown at us, and we're still trying to understand and read what's going to happen. So, I would suggest the same as Dennis. I think we should move forward with it, but probably plan on 2012, and maybe we can give you an answer within, I don't know, two, three, four months. But again, this is a major decision on the city's part. The county, you said, can take it. We can handle it. But for us, it's a major decision, and I think we need to talk about a little more. I don't know if you two need to speak so much more, but maybe Mick to us and at our committee meetings, we can maybe look at a few more numbers. Rick brought up an interesting item of the, you know, it's a big savings from 300,000 to 80,000. It's huge. We can count on it every year after the buyout, that is. But it's, I don't think we can make the decision tonight. I can't. I need to discuss it some more, and the committee meeting was about an hour long, and we've talked about it here for 22 minutes, and it needs to be looked at a little harder, I think. But I think we should continue with it. I really do.
Councilmember Reese.
I just want to understand, both of you have referred to moving forward but still Moving forward with discussion or moving forward with the transition?
Both.
But how can, what are you going to discuss if you've decided that you're going to move forward? I'm not understanding.
Well, before this evening's meeting, I never thought about the aspect that Rick brought to us, you know, paying the county $80,000 per year if they charge us a fee, if they may not.
Yeah, that's years down the line.
Instead of spending 300,000, no, it isn't years down the line, it's a year down the line. If we pay them $80,000, well, excuse me, seven years down the line.
Yeah.
If we pay them 80 and not pay 300 for our department, or, and that would be probably inflated, because we'd have higher wages and benefits, there's a big difference there.
And we have no idea what it would be seven years from now. We have no idea.
No, I know we don't. But it's, what Rick brought up is, it's a big savings. If that is the scenario, it's saving the city some money.
But yet, I still don't, I'm still not grasping. You said, let's move forward, but let's keep discussing.
I think we owe it to the county to give them an answer. Not tonight, is what I'm saying. Within the next 90 days, let's say, by March 15th or April 1st.
You're just talking about moving the discussion forward, not move forward with the consolidation.
Move the discussion forward as if we're going to do it. But if we're doing that, I'd like to have some more information, and I mean, like I said, we've only talked about an hour and 22 minutes.
Councilmember Anderson.
I want to just follow up on that, and I think, I agree. But when we say we're moving the discussion forward, I think we need to have staff give us some logical answers, how they could improve things with this list of issues that the staff has presented. You know, what's it going to take to overcome those? How can they be overcome? Is it with buying more technology, and does that reduce our savings? Or is it just some things we have to work through? So, I think we move the discussion forward with the intent that unless something significant comes up, we're going to do it.
One of the things I hear being said here is that the city, in its numbers, would experience the savings. However, if you look at the, what Mick said earlier, if you look at the entire cost of the assessing department, if it's now with the county, that's going to increase our fees too, because we're all taxpayers. It just becomes part of the county's budgeting. We're still 40% of the county, or 42% of the county here in the City of Wilmer, and if we let go, we're going to be paying for that through county taxes. It doesn't just stop if we let go of it. And so, we have to measure that, whatever that cost will be if the county absorbs it, against the concerns that city staff have about coordinating their needs with running the city efficiently. And again, the technology and these future parcel fees, if they are to continue. Those are big questions that haven't been answered yet. You know, this question that pops up so readily is, while there has to be a duplication of services going on, is a pretty shallow comment, because the county is doing their services on behalf of the county, the city assessing department is doing it on behalf of the city. And I don't see where these duplication of services are at this point. There might be something with, you know, some equipment or computers or something, but where you get your reduction in costs is reduction in staff. This is a very labor-intensive department. I'm sure it is with the county. It is with the city. And so, unless you're going to be reducing staff, how are you going to be saving costs? Councilmember Ahm.
Well, I agree with you, and that hasn't really been presented in our report, and there's also, and there might be duplication. And we're assuming there's duplication, but don't really know. And until we have more detail than an Alistair or another independent person come in to make the comparison, which I don't think we have to do, I think we're logical that if we have, you have 10 to 12 employees, just like running a construction crew, and you get two crews running in different directions, you're spending duplication of time, equipment, and services. You're better off keeping them together, or you've got to bid your projects accordingly the same way. Now, that's why I'm maybe oversimplifying things, but in essence, there would be a financial savings somewhere down the line that I can foresee, but I'm not an expert on it, and this is not my field. So, I'm assuming this, and I hate making an assumption not based on any facts.
I'd like to see somebody show us where those duplication of costs are.
I'd love to see that too, Mr. Mayor.
I don't know where they are.
I would love to see where they are.
I made the mistake of talking about duplication of services, and Larry corrected me at the meeting. And there isn't, I think it's consolidation of services and then the streamlining of those services. And like both Larry and Mick have said to us, this is very detailed. You know, these two guys have spent, I don't know, how long have you been working on this?
Over a year.
January, February?
Yeah.
Okay. So...
Ten months.
You've been working on it for at least 10 months.
Prior to that, Wayne and Mick worked on it in 2004, 2006.
And you guys, you know, you don't live assessing all the time, but you live administration for both of your branches of government. And we're sitting here, like Ron said, and I have to agree with you, I mean, we got this information, and we haven't had much time to really digest it and to really understand it. But more, you know, I'm not sure how to say it without offending you two guys, okay? But maybe I'm thick-headed, but we need to have this explained to me a little bit better so that I can see why you're saying this maybe isn't the right time. I don't understand that, Mick.
I think some of the questions that still have to be studied and answered is, where is the duplication of services? And if there are, we need to hear that. And what is the cost of that duplication of services? The other is, what is this technology that would make this viable? If we combine the departments, what is the technology that's needed? And this question of, and maybe it can't be answered, but the fee for parcels that exists for all the other jurisdictions in the county, would that apply to the city or would it not apply to the city? And I don't know if that can be answered, but if it is applied to the city, that's a cost that cuts into whatever savings there would be. And another question I have, if we merged, would the taxpayer experience the costs that the city has now shifted to the county? If we turn over the department costs to the county, what's the implication of that for county taxpayers? Because we are part of the county. It's not just us losing that budget.
What is the impact on the city resident, I think, is more, rather than the county?
Sure.
You know, what is the difference? Is there any difference? Is it actually a savings to the taxpayer themselves?
Right. That's what I don't know.
We don't know also, Mr. Mayor, what the county would, with this change, what their expenses would be to, if their budget would have to be increased accordingly to, what expenses would be to, if their budget would have to be increased accordingly to, what then, what then are we really saving? And we don't know that. And so it's a little, we're trying to be frugal in our thinking as, as we are trying to be fiscally conservative. We don't look like a bunch of fools making a decision just to shift for the sake of shifting. Also, there is concern with the dedicated employees that we have. And I know, and you know, I can relate to the construction industry. It's that you get a week's notice sometimes before you're down the road and onto the next job or looking for another job. That's happens and it happens quite frequently in our field. You try to give them more time than that, but some things are unpredictable and, you know, jobs change and you have to lay people off suddenly. In this case, we're given, hopefully, a long enough time period so they can adjust. And I think that's very fair. I think we should do that, especially since the employees that have worked for us have been there that long. I am concerned about that. I'm adamantly concerned about, about how that's going to be impacted so they have time to adjust. But until we get the information from the county, I don't know, Larry, have you, have you looked into what the additional cost would be for your department or in that department after this is resolved? And what would be the real cost savings?
Yes, I have looked at it. And basically, what you do is you look at what the budget is for the city currently when it comes over. So for example, the first year that comes over, it's, say, $303,000, okay? And after the first year, it starts going down with 12 and a half percent, then the county picks up, as the city reduces by 12 and a half each year, the county picks that up. That expense is probably the same. What will change though, as we talked with Mick, is you have retirements and, and if people leave, you'll better restructure your departments so you don't have two administrators. Right now, the city has an assessor administrator and the county has an assessor administrator. You won't need two of those. When they come to the county, we'd, we'd create a position to, to honor that employee who's been there a long time, who's been the director. And we, you know, but as that changes and to attrition, you can adjust that. And you would, it would be basically a seven-year transition process. And as those people change and leave, you'd, you'd adjust that. And your savings would come through adjustments and not having to have two bosses.
But isn't it true, Larry, that the administrator assessor for the county and the administrator assessor for the city are just very much a partial administrator? I mean, we're not talking about a full-time administrator. I know within the city assessing department, you know, Mrs. Erickson is the, is a senior assessor, but she's not.
Bad, bad choice of words, maybe. He's not inferring administrator. He's, he's talking about.
Their department.
Hitting up a department.
Department head.
Right now, there's a county assessor and a city assessor.
Right.
One retires, what Larry is saying, a, a new employee in that department would start down here, not, we wouldn't replace, or the county wouldn't bring it in at the same level.
But our current city assessor spends 80 to 85% of her time out in the field. She's not sitting behind a desk.
I don't know that.
She's not sitting behind a desk. She's one of our, our assessors. And so her amount of administrative time is very minimal. It's not like replacing a full-time administrator within a department.
Mr. Mayor, like I said, it's truly a city decision. And whatever decision you guys make, we're going to keep working with it.
I know.
We just want to make sure that, that someday you guys wake up and, as Councilman Fagerly said, well, we'll just get out of the business and all of a sudden, we end up with it lock, stock and barrel with no, no transition and a big shock to the system. And so I'm trying to look forward to make sure that as people come in and go in our business, that somebody doesn't come in with, with an idea that this is a good way to cut some city costs and dump it on us. Okay?
I hear you loud and clear. Thanks, Larry.
Counselmember Amen, it's your committee.
I, I think we'd better bring it back for some more discussion. In the meantime, I'll maybe talk to Mick afterwards, who might want to get some county commissioners' perspectives on it. Unless, Larry, you're telling us that the county's commissioners are fine with whatever decision we decide, then it's back in our court. I would like, I would like to see just a little more information on the numbers, Mick. I don't know what we can do, how we can break it down a little further, but I think we've got to be thorough. And I'd like to just bring it back to committee for further discussion and put it on the agenda.
All right.
I appreciate the councils and the mayor's input.
All right. Be back on your agenda then. All right, why don't you go ahead then? Let's see, there was no need for a motion at this point?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor.
All right, go ahead then.
Item number three is the committee considered two proposals to conduct executive search services to fill the city administrator's position. The two proposals were from Brimire-Fersman of Maplewood and Springstead of St. Paul. Both companies are reputable Minnesota firms, having conducted numerous executive searches for a number of years. Each proposal includes a description of the process and the procedures to be used in a search timetable review of company qualifications and experience, client list and free structures. Following review and discussion, a motion was made by Councilman Member Anderson, as seconded by Councilmember Reese, and carried to make the following recommendation, that is, that the full council be invited, invite both Brimire-Fersman and Springstead to a council work session for interviews prior to selection. And I will move with the recommendation, Mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, that both Brimire-Fersman and Springstead be invited to a council work session for interviews prior to their selection as the search firm for the city. Further comment? Those in favor of that motion say aye.
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 Opposed, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, the only other thing I'd like to mention is that the timeframe we were talking about at our previous session when we were all present, talked about how we have to keep this continually going. And Mick, has there been a tentative date set up to meet with these groups or where we can get the majority of the council there to ask questions yet? Has there been any, anything been set up or scheduled tentatively?
Not, not specifically, no, but we would shoot for late November, early December.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Go to file the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, to file the minutes. Those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Next, the Community Development Committee report minutes for October 28th. Counselmember DeBlick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Committee met on October 28th. First item on our agenda was the HRA update. Representatives from the city and county HRA were present, present to provide an update on HRA programs and to discuss organizational issues. Bernard Novak, chairman of the Wilmer HRA Board, described how the city and county HRA operate and share staff and equipment. Nikki Eijen, interim director, offered a handout showing various programs that the city and county HRA participate in. The handout showed that there were very few programs shared by the city and the county. A question was raised regarding the financial basis for a merger or consolidation. The HRA representatives stated that they needed to study efficiencies and analyze costs. Ms. Novak emphasized differences between the city and county HRA. She said organizational changes should occur only if benefits can be obtained. The disposition of real estate assets was briefly discussed in the context of a merger. And this, Elgin explained that the HRA was going to study a number of organizational options and asked the committee for direction. Each option for rig organization will be studied with an eye toward efficiencies and cost savings. The committee asked that the study analysis be shared with the council and asked to be kept in the loop as the process proceeds. That item was for information only, Mr. Mayor. Item number two, we had some discussion on the former terminal building at the airport. Staff presented a brief history of the land released and historical designation process. The committee discussed at length the land release process and roadblocks encountered by the city in completing that process. The historical significance of the property was again debated. Staff explained that the process had been initiated to allow demolition of the terminal building prior to the involvement by a local military museum group who had expressed an interest in the property, but had no means of acquiring or improving it. The results of a mold analysis conducted on the terminal building were presented and discussed. It was obvious from the, this analysis that there had been a longstanding mold problem at the terminal building. Staff presented two memos from the, the building official, both of which dealt with the conditions of the former airport building. The first memo detailed the cost of the mold abatement and correction, building deficiencies in order to make the building usable for any purpose. The second memo explained why the building official believed that the building to be hazardous and unsafe and offered directions to the council to abate the problem. Following significant discussion, a motion was made and seconded and recommended that the former terminal building be declared unsafe based on staff analysis and the mold report. And I'll introduce that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
There is a motion, and it's been seconded, that the formal, that the former terminal building at the old airport be declared unsafe based on staff analysis and the mold report. Comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselmember Fagerly?
What's going to happen to that little miniature hangar building to the south of it or southeast? Is that full of mold too?
Some would argue that the same fate waits for that building. Others would suggest that, that might be a possible solution in our discussions with the FAA if we were to try to salvage that building.
Okay. So this just.
So it's undetermined at this point.
All right, this motion just deals with the big terminal building then?
Was that our intent, Bruce? Yes.
Any other comments? Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Following further discussion, a motion was made and seconded, recommend that the FAA be requested immediately release the property to allow for hazardous abatement and building demolish. I'll introduce that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded, that the FAA be requested to release the property and allow for the hazard abatement and building demolition. Comment? Those in favor of that motion say.
Mr. Mayor?
You want to say something?
Well, I'm just having a difficulty with the building demolition part of it. I mean, we've gone from being a building that has a historical designation to demolition. And I understand the mold, but it just is kind of confusing for me.
Any other comments?
How we could get from one point to another so quickly.
Counselmember Amen?
Well, I somewhat agree. You know, I hate to see things torn down in thinking and repair things, but the cost of this, the cost to improve that building isn't worth what the building's worth and what you're going to get out of it. At least, I don't believe from what the report I read. And also, why do we build a new airport in the first place? Why do we build a new facility if that was, was good enough to be remodeled and, and reused? I mean.
Counselor Mayor, there, there, I want to ask Bruce to take us back. I try to explain it, but I get confused with the, with the two different possibilities that existed. But I want Bruce to take us back because when we started this, Mr. Reese asked, you know, how did we go from a historical significance to a proposed demolition? Well, we had some options early on until this idea of historical significance was being pushed, not by the city of Wilmer, but it was being pushed and the FAA changed their position with regard to this issue of historical significance. And then following this explanation of those two different programs, then we can maybe get a better grasp on the situation today.
Bruce, can you help us here?
Mayor, Ikey members of the council, I'll be glad to try to clarify that issue. The process for historical designation was completed at the time the city did its original environmental assessment for the new airport. That historical review determined there was no significance. That was rejected by the FAA in the course of the land release process. They said if you're doing a new EA, a new environmental assessment, you have to go back and do a new historical review, which the city did. The city engaged a consultant to do that. They prepared their report, and that's where the first real wrinkle in the whole process started. The consultant shared the results of the report with the FAA and with the federal and state historic preservation offices before they shared the results of the study with the party that paid them to do the study, namely the city. So we, we went into this thing a little bit behind the eight ball to begin with. They determined that it was historically significant and the study states several reasons why. To me, those reasons are still fairly debatable. Bottom line is, the approach the city took with the FAA was to disagree with the findings, that it was historically significant. And we pursued a path that's called an adverse effect finding, meaning we would determine that it's not significant from the city's standpoint and that we would have to, instead of preserving the building, we could demolish it, but we would have to provide some sort of mitigation. And the mitigation is typically in the form of a written and pictorial history or presentation of the building so that they can preserve in word and in photos the historical significance of the structure. We were entering into that phase with the federal government and with the state historic preservation office when the local group, and I should back up. The reason we determined that we were going to pursue the adverse effect finding was because we had kicked some tires around the community and we'd found no one that was interested in maintaining that building in its current condition. No one wanted to preserve that and use it for any purpose that seemed reasonable at the time. That gave cause to the city pursuing the adverse effect finding. At that point, the military group stepped in and said, "We'd be glad to use it, or we'd be glad to take the building for a museum and we'll use it." So the city cannot claim that there is no reasonable use because we would like to use it. That triggered the FAA and the SHIPO, the state historic preservation office, to back up and say, "Okay, the city can no longer pursue the adverse effect finding now that you've got a, an entity that's expressed interest in the building. That demonstrates to us that there is a reasonable market for the building. And now you have to preserve the building and any future owner will have to enter into a preservation easement that details exactly what those preservable features are in the building." And that, that really brought us to this point. We, we'd sat on it with the FAA. They'd push the city around for a couple of years, preventing us from doing anything with the property. During the term of the release, or during the term of the review, we weren't allowed to do anything on the property. And that includes, quite frankly, making improvements to the building, in my estimation. Everybody knows what kind of weather we've had this last year and the mold problem that historically existed in that building exacerbated itself and, quite frankly, has, has gotten to be a dangerous situation. So the only feasible course at this point is to pursue demolition. And we're going to have to go back to the FAA and say it is not reasonable to preserve that. Just because you had one party step forward and say they would take the building, that should not give cause to the FAA ruling that the city has to pervert, preserve that structure and make upwards of a million dollars worth of improvements just to make it habitable.
Is that what the cost would be to bring that building up to use? A million dollars?
The minimum. The minimum expense to replace windows, correct the water infiltration, and to do some roof repairs is estimated at about $600,000. To do those repairs and then to take care of the structural issues that have been identified in the mold report, they called up the fact that the metal bracing and bolts in the entire truss system appear to be rusting and corro, and having corrosion issues. To replace those issues and to put in a sprinkler system if it was occupied by an assembly occupancy or any other occupancy that would require sprinkling under the fire code, with the addition of possible elevators, and that could be two elevators, to maintain handicap accessibility because of the way the different levels are set up in that structure, you could not do it with one elevator. The estimate, the estimates we've gotten for that are in excess of $1.3 million.
And this group that wanted it preserved for a potential museum, were they also saying that they are going to, in some way, organize the payment for these improvements?
That's never been clear, Mr. Mayor.
So who's, who's expected to, to make those kinds of investments?
According to the FAA, the city of Wilmer is.
$1.3 million.
Potentially.
In an old hangar that is filled with mold.
That's correct.
And that the FAA people don't even like going down into the basement.
Yeah, that's right. They wouldn't go down there.
No.
All right. Well, the motion is that the FAA be requested to release the property and to allow for hazard abatement and building demolition.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I suspect that most of you got an email today. I found it interesting that it was addressed to Bruce, copied to me, and then all the blind copies that were flying around. That's kind of typical of the relationship we have with the people down in that office. A quick release. What we're, the action we're taking tonight is not going to result in a quick release unless they have a change of attitude. If you read the email, they make the statement that the mitigation Bruce referenced will be extensive, given it was the city's lack of maintenance that created the problem. Well, of course, we, we had a purchase agreement on that property probably more than two years ago. Why would we spend a half a million dollars to bring the building up to code and sell it for $300,000? At which time, the guy probably would have torn it down anyways because he wants the space for storage. The time, I think, this action tonight is, you know, it's time to stand up and take a stand.
Counselmember Anderson, you want to say something?
That, that answered my question. I wanted to know why we were doing this, and you answered it perfectly. Thank you.
Counselmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has anybody in Washington helped us out at all in this? And we got, you know, people from the state to represent us, and the FAA is under the guide and of the federal government, I'm assuming. I mean, or are they just a freelance entity that we have no control over? I mean, we do have people out there. Have they had any, any effort at all and any luck in speaking to the FAA?
We've had contact with the folks in Congress, and we've had actually representatives from their offices sit in on meetings with us when we're dealing with these folks, including our state legislators. We have a meeting, and then there's been some follow-up discussion by some of our state representatives. And I think we've made some progress with Shippel, who will be very instrumental, I think, in the outcome of this discussion. And there's a meeting set up for a couple of weeks from now, again, and we're going to make sure that we have some of our elected representatives there with us when we, when we meet with these folks. So yes, we are using them. They haven't, we haven't been able to produce the kind of results that we've been looking for, but they're involved.
I just think it's ironic that, you know, the state is pushing for economic development and jobs, and we have companies that want to access and buy that land, and, you know, we're stymied that we can't make that land available for business development when we have companies that are ready to move in there and build and produce product, and, and we can't let them have, have that access. All right. At this meeting, Mick, our staff will be there, representatives, whoever is elected tomorrow, they'll be there, I assume, from the state.
We may even ask the mayor to go with us. We, we just got the email today, Mr. Mayor, and we just had a minute or two to talk about how we should proceed with that.
All right. So in terms of this motion tonight, it's on the table. What should we do with this? Should we go ahead and vote on the motion, or should we hold off on that? Go ahead and vote on it and stand up to, to what's going on here. All right. Council, any other comments about this or questions? All right. The motion, it's been stated twice. This is a motion, Kevin, not a roll call. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries unanimously. Steve, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I'm sorry, over here.
Staff provided updates on various commercial industrial projects. Projects included Wilmer poultry, United Farm Credit Services, Rice Care Center, Jimmy John's, and Rice Hospital Kitchen Remodeling. And also, we had some discussion and reviewed the Blandon Foundation Rural Pulse survey that was sent out to all the council members earlier on. Lot of interesting results in this survey. Mentioned just a couple here that most rural Minnesota residents feel that they are personally able to make a positive local impact, yet they have concerns about their communities' ability to work together effectively. And that the demand for quality employment opportunities is an overwhelming priority within, within most of the rural areas of Minnesota. And most rural Minnesota residents believe their communities provide equal quality access to essential services. And so identifying alternate energy sources is a high priority for rural Minnesotans. It was 81 percent, especially women, feel that it is important to pursue alternate options such as solar, wind, and biofuels. Held this report, some interesting facts in it, and hope everyone in the council has the opportunity to review it. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that completed our meeting. If there are no questions, motion to file the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded to file the minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Number 12, the consideration of agricultural exemption of special assessments. Kevin, do you want to help us with that?
Mayor Heike, members of the council, our comprehensive assessment policy allows land in agricultural use this year to continue deferring special assessments against it if in the fall, they so declare that they will put it in farming operation next year. You have on your tabletop the amended resolution that includes the last entry that came in subsequent to the making of the council packet, that being all those listed in Hidden Valley Estates. It is staff's recommendation that we adopt the resolution, deferring these special assessments for another year.
Thank you, Kevin.
Review the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded for a resolution to extend these assessments for another year. Further comment? Counselmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Hidden Valley Estates lots, Kevin, are they truly being used as agricultural land? I mean, it is being used. They were in crop this year. If there's any development going on, and we've given him the whole packet, he could develop some and slowly remove them from this list, but at this point, I believe none of those have been developed. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call then.
Counselmember Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is a consideration of senior and disabled citizen deferment of special assessments. Kevin?
Mayor Heike, members of the council, Minnesota statutes allow senior citizens that have homestead credit to defer special assessments when they're in a hardship case, and it also allows disabled individuals to further qualify. You have before you on the tabletop, again, an amended resolution of those disabled individuals and senior citizens who have submitted the proper qualification documents to our office. It is staff's recommendation that we adopt the resolution approving those properties to be deferred. Reminder, the special assessments for the senior citizens would come due anytime the property changes hands, and then the payment is done and is required to be paid in full. And of course, the same with the disabled, if it would ever happen that that individual would no longer be disabled.
Move to approve. Second?
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded to adopt the resolution for delaying special assessments for hardship situations. Counselmember DeBlick?
Question, Mr. Mayor. If at the point in time that these assessments become due, is there an interest charged on that, the balance of these, or is that?
The interest as adopted by the total assessments, which I think is 4.75 this year, is assessed for 10 years, matching the bond payments. And so it's always a higher amount than someone would pay over 10 years because the principal is never reduced. But they recognize that and compare those prices when they make those decisions.
So then after that 10-year period, the interest is, no longer occurs interest?
That is correct.
Any other comments? Roll call?
Counselmember Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Now, we're down to 14. The consideration of a currency exchange license renewal and scheduling a public hearing for Bennett Ventures Incorporated and Quick Funds Incorporated. Kevin?
Mayor Heike, members of the council, consistent with Minnesota Chapter 53A, the Minnesota Department of Commerce has notified the city that they have received applications for a currency exchange license renewal for the calendar year 2011 from both Bennett Ventures, Inc. and Quick Funds, Inc. And it requires the city within 60 days to render a decision regarding the renewal of these licenses. It has been our practice to hold a hearing in the past, but I believe the law has changed where you could render a decision without the hearing. But the hearing was always there to take testimony from any citizens who had concerns with their operations. At this point, because it's city practice, that's staff's recommendation to set a hearing for two weeks. Let's move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded to set a public hearing. Is it for both companies then?
Each one would have their individual hearings.
Okay, for both Bennett Ventures Incorporated and Quick Funds Incorporated. Comment? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next is to schedule a date for the Board of Canvas and the County Board of Canvas. Kevin, can you explain?
Mayor Heike, members of the council, pursuant to state law, we're actually setting the time of the Board of Canvas because the current law limits us to Friday, November 5th. The county has set their Board of Canvas at 3:00 PM, and it is a requirement that the largest city in the council, in the county, be represented.
What day?
Friday, November 5th, 3:00 PM.
Okay.
So we need a city representative there, and then we need to set the time for the local Board of Canvas. They will be done by 4:30, I'm assured. So our times are post 4:30, or you can come at noon or whatever. It's about a 10-minute review.
Okay, so they go back to back, 3:00 and then 4:30?
Your call. You can set the cities anytime they want.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
4:30, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move a motion.
I need a second.
Clarification, Mr. Mayor. Does that have to take place on Friday, or can we hold that before the counties?
Okay, before the counties, but it has to take place on Friday, November 5th, the third day after the election.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion. We need a second.
Second.
Okay, then, we have a motion that's been seconded to hold the Board of Canvas meeting at 4:30 on Friday. That follows the County Board of Canvas meeting at 3:00. Further comment about that?
Which, Mr. Mayor, we do need you or a volunteer to be represented at their Board of Canvas.
Okay, I think I can be there.
Okay.
If not, I'm sure Counselmember Reese would be available.
He'd be cleaning his shotgun.
I remember Counselmember Tinklinburg coming in one time. He'd been out pheasant hunting, and he came in with his hunting gear on and blood all over himself to come in for a Board of Canvas meeting. All right. Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have a proclamation designating the Wilmer School District Education Week. And I'd like to read this into the public record. It's titled, "Wilmer School District Education Week Proclamation." Whereas school personnel have trained and committed their lives to be teachers and role models to teach our children, and whereas these school personnel help to mold and shape our youth to fill our footsteps and be our future leaders, whereas the same school personnel have enhanced the lives of our children and the overall quality of our community, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary Unit of Wilmer, number 167, wishes to pledge appreciations to all the teachers and school personnel in the Wilmer School District. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lester J. Heike, Mayor of the City of Wilmer, hereby proclaim the week of November 14th to the 21st, 2010, be declared Wilmer School District Education Week, and ask that all citizens of Wilmer extend appreciation to all the teachers and school personnel of the Wilmer School District. We will present that to the school board on behalf of the city council. After that, we have announcements of committee meeting dates. Finance?
Mr. Mayor, finance will meet Monday, the 8th, at 4:45.
November 8th, city finance. And Dennis, why don't you mention the next one so everybody has it on their calendar? The 22nd?
The 22nd will be at 3:00 PM at the Fire Hall.
November 22nd, 3:00 PM at the Fire Hall. On November 8th, it's at 4:45.
That's right. And I, and I would add on the November 22nd, if, if any of the council members don't have information that they need, you know, we talk about this all the time at the Finance Committee, it is that you need so that we're prepared on the 22nd. Thanks.
Public Works, Public Safety.
Tuesday, the 19th, 4:45.
The 19th?
9th.
9th, I'm sorry. Okay, November 9th, at 4:45, Public Works, Public Safety. Community Development?
No meeting scheduled, Mr. Mayor.
Labor?
No meeting next week, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I have some announcements here. First of all, the Holidays Parade, which kicks off our holiday season, is scheduled for November 20th, 2010, in downtown Wilmer. The parade starts at 6:30 PM. There is a Christmas tree lighting at Selvick Park at 5:30 with some Christmas carol singing and some small bonfires located on the street. It's quite a festive evening. Encourage our citizens and children to please come out and roast some marshmallows and hot dogs, and then stay for the parade, which starts at 6:30. That's November 20th, the Holidays Parade in downtown Wilmer. I've been asked by our technician here and Director of Rack 8, Rudy V. Hill, to announce to the public that the wastewater treatment plant open house was videotaped. There is a 40-minute videotape that will be shown this week after the showing of the city council meeting each time. So, tonight, the city council meeting will be shown again later tonight at 10:00, and the open house program will be shown after the city council, and every time that happens this week, that 40-minute videotape immediately follows the city council meeting. I have a request here from the Charter Commission. Give me a second to find it here. It's from Mr. Bonowitz, who's the Charter Commission Chair, and I'll read it to the council members. He states that in order to complete their work, they are in need of a response from the city council to the amended city charter presented to the council in July. At the Charter Commission meeting on October 26th, Mr. Bonowitz was directed to send a letter to the mayor and council to ask for a meeting time to go over the recommendations and findings from the attorney from the League of Minnesota Cities. Now, to do this, it seems logical that we establish a work session between the city council and members of the Charter Commission. However, I'm also fully aware, as you are, that we've just scheduled, or asked our city administrator to schedule a hearing with the two search firms, which will happen probably by the end of November or shortly thereafter. So, for the council tonight, my question is, it seems like maybe we should wait until we go through that search firm effort and then meet with the city charter people. Are you open to that idea? And then we would have a work session with all council members invited to be there. Any objections to that, or anybody want to say something about that? Councilmember Anderson?
You know, it seems like we're putting it off an awfully long time. We've got the week of the 15th. We have just a city council meeting. That's all we have that week. I'm wondering if we could, I know it's difficult to get all eight, or nine people there, but, you know, we need to give them some direction and try to move this forward. If we wait till we're sometime into December, you know, it's going to be difficult to get people together. I don't think that Mick was anticipating that we would have the search firms in mid-December, were you?
No. I recall reading those two proposals, and I think one of them actually had proposed a schedule that started well after the first of the year. So, I think if you were going to delay one in favor of the other, you might want to move the Charter Commission up, make sure you get that out of the way, and we can shoot for sometime in November yet.
All right. So, would it be workable, then, to schedule it, the middle part of November?
Yeah.
All right. Can you be in communication with it? Does any council member have anything else to say about that?
Mr. Mayor, I agree, and we shouldn't keep them holding them and working on it. We need to respond.
Okay. Mid-November?
I agree.
All right. Anybody object?
I don't object, but I'll be on vacation from November 11th through the 22nd.
Okay.
So, you're missing the next one?
Yes.
Got to say that.
Mick, maybe you take that into account and see what's workable. All right. Mick will handle that. Last comment, it's an obvious one, and that's that tomorrow is the general election for the state and for the county board and for the city council. For the mayor, I encourage everybody to take the time to go out and vote, and Candyoye County always has a very high response. Hopefully, we'll have a good turnout tomorrow. The weather forecast is very favorable. Is there anything else to come before the council tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. We have a motion, and it's been seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.